Okay. So, I'm going to call to order the October 10th, 2019, regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Appeals. As we just said, please speak into the microphones today as Terri's not here to take minutes, so she's going to do it from the recording, so try to speak up. Board members and audience members. So first, we approve the minutes of June 13th, August 8th, and September 12th. I read June 13th and August 8th, I didn't have any questions or issues about those. I wasn't here for September.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
And can we do all three at once, Eleanor?
You can.
Okay, so, motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 13th, August 8th, and September 12th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So moved. So, our first application today is 18-19, Peter L. O'Brien and Natalia V. O'Brien, 36 Low Beach Road. Attorney Cohen representing.
Hi, Stephen Cohen, my applicant. I will keep it a little shorter this time and leave all the details out, but just to remind you that this lot is entirely surrounded on three sides by paper roads, and what my client is seeking to do is to get permission to use 147 square feet of ground cover that he will be available to him to use by right with no permits, but, which has been significantly delayed first by land court process, and then now just by town council, I believe that, Eleanor? No, oh, right, no, I'm sorry, this isn't land court. It's just, town council is redoing the RFP to make the process consistent with state law, and that is held up for reasons unknown. I believe Susan, I believe the chair reached out to town council, and I don't know if she received any response. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
There hasn't been a response yet, right Eleanor?
Correct.
Right.
So again, my client is only seeking to get that ground cover that would otherwise be available as soon as this process is cleared up. He's the only abutter on all three sides of these lots, so he'll essentially automatically get it as soon as that process is done. But they'd like to get started. This process has got, he's the second owner of this land that's been waiting for this process, which started in, I believe, 2011. Back when I was at Reed Gullicks in Hanley and Gifford, it started for a different abutter than this abutter. So it's been going on eight years now, and we think it's winding up shortly. There was a neighbor who had come in with questions last time. I don't know if they're here, I don't see them here. We did meet with them and talk to them, and I think resolved part of their issue because I think they were confused about which lot this was and where the road was and was not. If, and I think we submitted, I know that we submitted a picture to the file that shows that essentially this, the neighbor's lot is across the street from our neighbor, so their house doesn't look through the sightline of this paper road. And we're not even really talking about the paper road, but they seem to be sort of confused as to how it all worked together. But I just want to respond to their concerns and tell you what happened. So, the paper road in question is not in their sightline. It's the paper road on the other side of the, other, of our abutter's house that potentially might be in their sightline, but not this one. And then if you go into their guest cottage and go up to the second story and sort of look through the side of a dormer, you know, like a back bedroom, you can see, you know, this house from far, far away. But the angle of the house is like this, and the angle of the road is like that. So there's really no sightline issue at all. And not that that's an issue that I think the ZBA really should be concerned with, but I did want to suggest, just demonstrate that we have spoken to them. We tried to show them where everything was located, and tried to explain to them that we're not trying to suddenly, you know, build in this paper road. We're just trying to get approval for the ground cover that we're going to get anyway, and we're trying to work that out. So I think that they understood that, and I think that they were okay with it, but I don't know that they have ever really responded since we had that meeting. And I'm happy to take questions.
So, my concern still is circumventing the process. I know we talked about the condition about no CO be issued upon completion of the work. They declined to purchase it, but does anyone else, does anyone still have that issue? And that seemed like it was a...
They wouldn't start the work until they own the property.
No.
No.
They want to start the work now.
Prior to ownership of the extra.
Right, but no CO until the purchase is complete.
So we have two of these applications.
Yeah, so that was our hangup, was that, or at least my hangup, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but my hangup is then if something happens where this doesn't go through, then we've allowed them to build on, you know, they've had more ground cover than they would have been allowed, and and then if we don't issue a CO, if they don't take the lot or the paper road, or something happens, at some point, I mean, that becomes a hardship if they want to sell their property or, you know, do something, so it doesn't really have any teeth, I think.
Yeah, I, my concern is that there's no, where are the teeth?
Right.
Where's the teeth?
And I get that I-
If this, the bad scenario happens, you know?
You mean that if-
The structures built, CO is not issued. That's the concern.
Right. Eleanor, have you heard back from Attorney Marsh?
I have not, despite multiple attempts to, again, get the process going.
Yeah.
And I have also involved town manager and project managers and the real estate advisor.
Yeah.
So, other people are now in the loop. This has been lingering way longer than it ought to have. I started the process a year ago with a meeting with procurement officers and Attorney Marsh Town Council, who would handle these matters, and Director Wors. I had a timeline, you know, sort of the administrative itinerary of everything that needed to happen. I gave task lists to people, and you can't do anything until she updates the RFP form. So, that's step one.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go, I've got, I've locked and loaded for everything I need to contribute to the process, so.
I, I'm sure that's the case.
Once you have the RFP, once that's updated, what's, how, what's your timeline after that?
Then there is a several month timeline in terms of putting advertisements in various publications where it's required, mailings, and then accepting bids, and doing that all according to a very prescribed procedure. But I think, all things considered, it would be two to three months, start to finish, by the time we'd be able to acknowledge and approve a bid.
And who are the bids from?
Well, anybody can put in a bid. But the, there are criteria that are in play, at play for deciding which bid is the most appropriate and acceptable and advantageous.
Yeah.
So it's not, in this case, not simply based on highest dollar amount. It's based on other criteria.
Mm-hmm.
But typically, the criteria of being a direct abutter is an automatic win if you bid, and then if you don't, then the other neighbors could bid on it. But there are some situations where the town has a single piece of land, and there might be multiple abutters who would have the same preference, but that's not the situation here, because all of these roads are being cut in half for each of the abutters, so there's no other abutter in this case.
Could a, can an abutter purchase both parcels possibly?
They have to redo the plan.
They, they could, but not, they wouldn't, their priority wouldn't, so the person on the other side wouldn't have the priority on my client's side and vice versa. But if someone doesn't bid, then the other abutter can do both, and that, that has happened. But, so that's the incentive for my client, among other things, to get this done as soon as possible. So, you know, again, because this has been going on for eight years, and because the situation is essentially created by the town, we would really appreciate it if we could move forward with this variance, especially considering it's a relatively small area here. We're not talking about a massive overage. We're talking about 149 square feet, which is important to my client, but not, you know, it's not as if we would suddenly be over by hundreds and hundreds of feet or some large amount. It's a, it's a modest amount of space.
I am encouraged by the fact that Eleanor has met with and brought this to the attention of a bunch of other people. I didn't realize, Eleanor, that you only started working on this a year ago.
Well, just to give you the background, you'll see in your packet, I believe I included all of the plans in the order of taking it, with the actual order of taking, although this was approved to town, meaning years before, the actual order of taking didn't happen until, I want to say, 2016.
Mm-hmm.
And then there were some issues with the previous owner, there were some illnesses, and it looked apparent that there was going to be a transfer of the property or some estate issues. So, we sort of held off, and then I wanted to get the process started a year ago, exactly.
Okay. So, it's not just the town's fault or issue, but, again, I'm only one person, but I'd like to, I'd like to see what comes from, because again, I don't want to circumvent the process, and I don't want to become a clearinghouse for things that aren't quite approved yet. Like, there is a process, I know it's frustrating, I know this one isn't land court, but, you know, land court is frustrating for a lot of people who practice in the real estate area, and you just have to wait it out, and it's, you're at the mercy of them. I get that this is a little different because town council does effectively work for the town, and the delay is unfortunate. But I would like to, I would, I don't feel that I want, I don't feel in favor of going forward with granting a variance on this. Again, I'm one person. I'd rather see if something comes back from town council now that there's pressure from other areas in the town besides just us.
Well, I'm a little more comfortable now, it appears that the neighbor's okay with it.
Mm-hmm.
And that alleviates a little bit of a cloud over this one. Is there status on the removal of the house? Wasn't that going to be donated to the town?
It was, and the idea is to move it, I think, to the police barracks, right? Eleanor sent me an update, so she'll let her-
Is that still implied?
I just actually got some emails about that this morning. Charlie Gibson's estimate for the move was in excess of the budgeted amount, but Mr. O'Brien and his architect are working to find an alternative estimate that would satisfy the town's budget. So it's not complete, it's on hold for now.
Well, it, it's proceeding, it's just in process. Like, I think they're going to make it work, is what I'm hearing on my end. But they have to make it work within the number. So again, the preference would be to donate that building to the town for housing out there. Susan, or Madam Chair, I understand your concern that, you know, potentially not giving the variance here creates pressure for the town to get its stuff done, but, you know, unfortunately, that victimizes my client and all of the other people who are in this situation, because actually, I just want to be clear that this RFP issue is not just sites specific, it's for all of these lots. I don't know, you probably know, but just for the rest of the board. If the value of the property is less than $35,000, then the town can do a direct disposition. But if it's more than $35,000, they have to go through an RFP. So every property that's more than that is currently being held up for, until that form is corrected under 30B statute. So, you know, I would really hope that the board would, would try to alleviate, you know, consider this a patch that until the town is able to resolve the issue on its own, it would allow for these variances as a temporary measure, instead of as a, you know, allowing the issue. Because the issue obviously is going to be resolved with the town, no matter what. They'll eventually get it done. But if we could get a patch to get through it, I think that would be helpful. I do also actually want to note that my other client, who previously had a similar issue, who, we're going to be coming back as the third application. We've eliminated the variance, and we're going forward with a special permit, so it's not as if, if you do this, then you'll be, you know, we'll be holding it to your feet on the next one. We've eliminated the variance on that application.
Does anyone else on the board have any thoughts?
Question. You're not asking for any relief on the guest, construction of the guest house as far as the setback?
No.
Okay.
Karen, do you have any thoughts?
No thoughts, yeah, I mean, I definitely agree with you. I'm not really too excited about moving forward, setting a precedent, especially based on hypotheticals. Just, there's still a chance that things could potentially change in one way or another, and just those unknown variables alone, I couldn't base a decision on that. So, I probably couldn't support it at this point.
I mean, just, I don't know, I don't understand the dynamics between town council and the town, but I, is this an administrative change to the document? I mean, why, why is our town council holding itself? I know that it's a rhetorical question, but, you know, I would think they could get this done in priority, and we have some leverage in that where the town is getting a free house, if they can make this happen. I mean, it seems to me possibly there's something more to this.
I, the letter that was drafted and prepared and signed by the chair regarding this and a few other applications, that was sent to town council almost a month ago, to which I've not had any kind of response, has now gone to, I waited as a courtesy to see if I would hear back. And I also followed up with other emails, not related to the ZBA, but just to get the process hopefully jump-started. That didn't happen, so I, when I heard this morning from the real estate advisor about this, related to the house move, I responded to all those parties, which includes town manager, Erica Mooney, and Ken Bogrand, that it's unacceptable, and we need to get the fire lit. And I included the letter from Susan in the application, and the email that I sent that was one of probably 25.
And that was just this morning?
That was this morning. So I've now introduced this to other elements that may be able to put additional pressure, but
So, why don't, yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't I request a continuance for a month? And hopefully, we'll have an answer, a positive answer on the house move, and the town might see that, or the board might see that as a benefit, if we can get that resolved. And also, perhaps the wheels of the town will move faster in that month. So if you would make that motion, I would be fine with it.
Good.
I think that's a smart move. Oh yeah, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak about this one? Okay. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor to continue this till next month, say aye.
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 Thank you.
That's November, well, we're continuing for December 13th.
Yeah.
I believe that is November 14th.
Okay. So, next, moving on to new business, we have application 23-19. We, a, is it Papale?
Papali.
Papali Calman, 43 Appleton Road, Arthur Reed representing.
And Arthur Reed here representing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you for continuing last month, I appreciate that.
No, again, it was, I think, the right thing to do under the circumstances. And delighted that we actually have five members here today, notwithstanding the weather and everything else that's going on. This is a situation in which we're dealing with a structure that was moved to the locus pursuant to a building permit that was issued in 2013. And the locus is now in the VTAC zoning district. It had formerly been in RC2. The structure is situated at its closest point, which is a porch, a two-story porch, 19.8 feet from Appleton Road. The frontage requirement in VTAC, the front yard setback, rather, requirement in VTAC is 30 feet. The main part of the structure is set back 29.6 feet at its closest point to Appleton Road. The porch extends another 10 feet, to the point where, as I said, it's 19.8 feet from, from Appleton Road. We spent some time trying to reconstruct exactly what happened here. My client, Rick Calman, Mrs. Calman's husband, is here with me, and he and I have been going over the background of this and the building permit applications in some detail to figure out what happened. He did, in fact, have a surveyor, Ted King, work with him on citing the structure. And it was being cited in accordance with the approved building permit application, which had been submitted by the architectural designer that had been working with them on the project, Val Oliver. And the interesting point about this is, if you see the plan, the property has actually been accessed historically from the west, from what is known as Mizun Mast Extension, which is a continuation of the road known as Mizun Mast that extends down into the property that originally belonged to the Burchells. Mrs. Calman is the daughter of Phyllis Burchell and of Gibby Burchell, who owned the whole area. And the, this property was always accessed down through their property that subsequently was sold to the land bank down at the end of the Mizun Mast roadway, which runs through the Pine Valley subdivision. And the property always had the address of Mizun Mast Extension. In fact, the application, the building permit application that was filed in 2013 showed the address of the property as 22 Mizun Mast Extension. Then got written in later on, on the application, aka 43 Appleton Road. The issue is that there's never any easement reserved or roadway layout officially made of Mizun Mast Extension, even though the access to the property, the main access to the property had always been that way and continues to still be that way, and has not been shut off in any way. The legal access to the property at the present time has to be considered as being Appleton Road, because that's the only road upon, the only road dedicated as such upon which it fronts. But the fact is that this was always considered as being Mizun Mast. And when the building permit application was filled out, I can understand what happened. First of all, it showed as RC2 on the zoning, and that was then crossed out to show the present VTAC zoning. And it showed the distance from the front as being 300 feet. Well, the house, the structure, not a house, the structure was being placed 300 feet, thereabouts, from Mizun Mast Extension. And it showed rear of 20 feet, which would be from Appleton Road. Left 20 feet, that would be from the land bank property to the north. And right 100 feet, which would be consistent with the approximate distance to the southerly boundary of the property. And the result is that enormous confusion has surrounded this whole situation. What we're asking for is that relief be granted. We filed an application in the alternative for special permit relief on the basis of it's being structured, cited in accordance with the survey that was being done in connection with the citing of the structure. We also, in the alternative, asked for variance. The result is that, again, the structure would, under zoning, be required to maintain a 30-foot setback from Appleton Road, with that being considered as being the frontage, which is not the way that it was treated by the applicant or the building department at the time that the permit was being issued. In fact, the, it was shown as being 20 feet, and in fact, it's 19.8 feet from Appleton Road. So the structure was placed, was when it was moved to the site, it was placed in exactly the location that they showed the building department that it would be placed in, except that it was 19.8 instead of 20 feet from what they were treating as the rear of the lot, namely, Appleton Road. And under these circumstances, we think that there would be, obviously, substantial hardship and very little benefit from moving the structure further away from Appleton Road. And we would therefore ask that relief be granted to allow us to maintain it in its existing location. Mr. Calman is here with me, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Arthur, in terms of the HDC approval, do you think they would have a different view, literally, if it were, if it was listed as an Appleton address by allowing the porch in the front?
I can't really say. I mean, obviously, it has, it looks the same way, regardless of where you consider the frontage as being. It has the same appearance. There are a number of other structures on the lot that are, in fact, further away, all of them are further away from Appleton Road and closer over to Mizun Mast. But certainly, it would have had the same level of visibility. And again, I'd comment that Appleton Road, you know, there's considerable vegetation between the traveled part of Appleton Road and the boundary line. It's about, and vegetation within the site. There's approximately nine feet between the edge of the traveled portion of Appleton Road and the actual lot line. But I, again, the visibility would have been the same either way, Jim. I don't think it would have made a difference.
May I say? You can't really see-
Sorry, sir, you have to get up and, just have to introduce, yeah, you just have to say your name and-
Singing for a band. You really can't see the decks all that well now, okay? The trees, whatever you want to call it, it's scrub, what I call scrub, has really grown in after the building and everything else, you know, because, you know, when you move a building, things get moved around. So, all of that came in. I also took in account, I brought in some of those, what do they call those trees? That grow like hell.
Lilac flowers.
Thank you, thank you very much. Got a couple of those, put those in line, you know, to try to break up the look so that it would look nice. I didn't do that because I thought I was in trouble. I did it because I wanted to kind of soften up the look for my neighbors. Seemed like the right thing to do. Like I said, everything that we did, we thought we were doing right. I really did. When I, I'm not throwing Ted under the bus, and I'm not throwing Val under the bus, right? What happened, we thought we were doing the right thing. I thought it was a 20-foot setback. When I asked Ted, what is the setback when we were working there? And he said 20 feet. Sounded right to me, right? I asked him to set me a boundary to set the building back 30 feet. I asked him to set me two stakes, so that I could make sure I had a 10-foot boundary between what I thought was the property line and the deck, you know, if I wanted to put a deck in later. This was well before we even decided to do the decks, all right? The decks and stuff like that in the second level, that didn't happen, like, when I moved the building. That happened two, two years later. And I, and the thing about it is, is it wasn't like I was rushing along. I was doing it on pennies. So it took me six months to take the second level down and bring it back up, along with the decks. And everybody that I brought this to, and I've been back to the HDC before, Jim, okay? With other things with them, they've looked at the decks and saw everything. This was just recently, everything was fine. Didn't have a problem with it. So I was under the impression we were doing the right thing. I wouldn't have really noticed it had it not been for Ted making another design because we were moving the hoop houses around. And I wanted to make sure that was correct nowadays. You have to think of it kind of the way we looked at it back in the day. When my wife owned the land bank land, and she owned the other land that was to the side of us, if we wanted to put something up, we had a lot of land. You know, it wasn't like you needed a 20-foot offset. You know, it wasn't like you needed a 20-foot offset. You had another lot of land to the side and to the side. When those things got sold, all of a sudden, things weren't quite right. I'm correcting that now. I've got it all pretty much corrected now, all right? We're not trying to do anything, we're not trying to get anything by anybody or anything like that, all right? I truly thought what we were doing was right, and I built a hell of a deck, right? This ain't no 2x4 deck. And to be able to take it down or do anything like that, I mean, that's, that seems absurd to me. I'd also have to remove all the windows and everything else that are on that side, or the sliders and everything else, because you can't have a slider on the second level that goes out to nowhere. So it's, it's quite a bit of work, all right? So I just wanted to bring that up to you folks so that you understand where I'm coming from. Thank you for your time.
Arthur, this is, is this part of the process of cleaning up the issues on this lot? This is one of...
Yes. Yes, we want to clean the whole thing up, obviously. By the way, excuse me, the plan that you have, I believe, I don't, not sure that you have the most recent plan, because there was a hoop tent that was actually on the property line. That's been removed since, and I have a more recent plan that shows that as, as in fact, having been removed, so that, that encroachment no longer exists.
Shows it right here.
Yeah, that's one.
There's another one here.
I'm somewhat familiar with, I know there's a note in here about planning board, and I saw, I think I saw the hearing at one time. I mean, can you describe?
That was about a proposed zoning change.
Right.
That we submitted for the last town meeting to, to rezone the property, but we didn't pursue that at town meeting.
And that's still kind of been limboed?
There were concerns raised, and we didn't, about the specific change that was proposed, and we didn't, we didn't pursue it. So the zoning has remained in the CTEC that, it was, or VTEC, rather, which was placed in at the approximately 2012 town meeting.
So Eleanor, when you, you have in your notes that you did a search at the building department, the building department file, and you didn't find any licensed surveyor plan in connection with this 2013, just the HDC plans?
Correct, but the HDC plan was the one done by Val, and did have, maybe she cut and pasted an image from a previous ass build when it was RC2, was on the face of, you know, the HDC plan, they have a cover sheet, so the cover sheet showed it in RC2. But given what Attorney Reed is saying, in terms of his interpretation of the sequence of events, having taken a deep dive into the file, frankly, that does make some sense to what they're saying may have happened in terms of the misinterpretation of the zoning.
And there's no plausible way that anyone would have said that this structure would be intended to be 300 feet away from Appleton Road, which is what the application said. So that's what draws me to the conclusion that they were clearly measuring the front yard setback from what is known as Mizun Mast Extension, even though it doesn't legally exist as such.
Is that what it says on the building permit?
What?
Application?
What?
As far as the dimensions away from the road?
Yeah. Three, it says, front 300, left 20, rear 20, right 100.
Look at page 87 of your packet.
Okay.
I did put those materials in the packet.
In addition, page 73, which is the front of the building permit, 325-07, issued March 30th of 2007, lists the premises and the original placement of the structure off of Mizun Mast Extension, not Appleton Road.
Clearly, that's a mistake, but it's an understandable mistake that I think that everyone fell into.
Right. So anyone in the audience who wants to speak about this one? Yeah, okay.
June Perkins and I live across the street viewing the two decks, lights, doorways. It's not overgrown, I just want to say that. There's maybe one of the large cypress, but that's it. I'm confused as well as you. I've looked in the files, I never found a survey. I think it was just done, my guess, that it was just done by himself. This Appleton Road, they knew, it wasn't a mistake. He wrote a letter to the planning board about some issues that we, as neighbors, had, and mentioned his right to Appleton Road, knowing it full well when the land was issued to the land bank. So they were well aware that that Mizun Mast could not be their address. And so that goes back, well, I have one, when they separated their land to the land bank, and it's 2005, when the Kalman Club Hall broke it into lots and gave one to the land bank. So I think then they knew. I think it's been a bunch of issues that were mistakenly done on purpose, and now I hope you can write it, because I don't think there's a house on Nantucket that has two front porches that overlook the road. And I think the building personally should be put back to what it was originally meant to be, and those decks should at least come off if the, if the house can't be turned around and, you know, a front, a correct frontage put forth. That's all I have to say right now.
Can I say something?
You can, but I don't want to get into, it has to be, it has to be to us, to the board, not a back and forth between...
I understand.
Let's let, let's, do you want to wait until after?
Campbell Sutton, 15 Appleton Road. And I did send a letter in, which I think you have. I really, this issue seems to come down to which address do you want? Are you 43 Appleton Road, or are you 126 or 128 Mizun Mast Extension? Because if you're 128 Mizun Mast, HDC would definitely have thought, well, that's the back of the property, right? And as I said in my letter, Appleton Road is at, on the dirt section is a private road. And so you could see that it is maybe not a public way from which anyone would be viewing the home. Well, it's not supposed to be a home, it's supposed to be a workshop. So I'm not sure why the workshop has a deck and sliding glass and exterior lighting on the second floor. That is very visible, it does not, the lighting doesn't comply with the dark sky lighting by law that we have. And I just think the deck needs to come off, I think it needs to look like what it is. It is in VTEC, it is not a dwelling, it's not meant to be a dwelling unit, it's not meant to look like a dwelling unit, right? It was, I think, under the building permit, they were taking out all the bathrooms and the kitchen, I mean, so it technically isn't even supposed to have a bathroom, which I wasn't sure why the building department would have a, have a, you know, issue a permit to remove bathrooms in a workshop, which clearly should have one. But anyway, that was just my read of the original packet. I did not completely read the packet for this, for today, but I did read the one for September when I was here. And again, that is, that road is, has two access points to land bank property, which you can only walk to, you, there's no parking lot on Appleton Road for land bank property. So everyone sees that, what looks to be a house, right? And that deck, you're going to have to grow some pretty big scrub pine to have that disappear. In the photo that is included in the packet, you can see that, I think it's even, you know, maybe 10-foot 4x4s to put up a fence. That's not even tall enough to block the view of the second floor. So I realize that there is an expense involved, and I, I'm sorry about that part, but it, it's not an appro, it wasn't, it wasn't applied for appropriately with the correct address or the correct zoning declaration on it. If people are thinking it's RC2, well, it's been a long time since it was RC2. It has been VTEC, and I believe it was the owners of this property that submitted for these 43 and 47, and maybe 45, to all go into VTEC to begin with. So they were aware of the zoning they were in. Anyway, I'm not sure what else I can say. I do apologize to Mr. Kalman for the confusion. I don't see a problem with the building, per se. If that deck is off, your six-inch intrusion doesn't seem to be that much of an intrusion into the front yard setback. However, the, using 43 Appleton and declaring that as the front of your house, one, it's not supposed to be a house, two, there aren't houses with a front that look like that. All down that side of Appleton Road is single-family homes with appropriate facades. Anyway, that's, I guess that's all I have to say.
The building permit I'm looking at doesn't show, I know it does, but I just want to clarify, the building permit I'm looking at on 73 is for a modular dwelling unit, and it talks about bathrooms, and I can't really read the writing for how many, but it doesn't show that it's a workshop, and that's the one we're talking about?
That's my confusion. Is that what we're talking about?
Or is that a separate building?
What building permit?
Three bedrooms, two and a half baths.
So on page 87, it says, house turned into a garage.
That's a different building permit.
That was submitted by, by the Butter.
Yes?
The one on page 73, that's not me, I didn't...
Oh, that was with the letter from all the, from all the neighbors.
Pages 65 through, pages 65 through 82 of the packet are all letters from Butter's with some materials they included with their letters. My materials are from page 83 on.
And the, and the building permit that we are operating under here is number 36813, issued on March 29, 2013.
Which is in the ground cover calculation section, it says, house turned into garage.
What page you on, Jim?
87.
Thank you.
Where does it say that?
Under the ground cover section of that building permit, middle of the page.
Yeah, I see that, right. Yeah, it was, it was, I guess it was a house before it was moved to the site.
The house?
The house was given to me by Larry Maury, and there was a reason for it, but I won't get into that. The house was a Cape Carter, all right, when I brought it on, just a regular Cape. I went down and I got the HDC to approve to put a second level on, because I wanted to make two shops. I wanted to be able to have a shop for carpentry work down below, that eventually I might want to rent someday, and then I wanted to have a glass, kind of a screen repair shop, because I'm getting a little older, and I thought maybe I could get myself into some of that. So that was the whole idea behind the building.
Explain the deck, the reason for the deck.
The reason for the decks are, is because you have to have access to get into the second level, and you can't from the first level, because the first level will be independent of the second level. So you have to have access to get on. The decks themselves were put on because anybody that has a shop or anything like that likes to have a place to be able to go outside, put a few things out there, bring stuff in through the six-foot door, okay? I put the glass, you know, when I did that, I was trying to make it so that it would look more like the neighborhood, all right? I could have put in regular six-foot barn doors, all right, for a shop.
I think that your, your description, you know, I get that's what, the vision that you had, but...
But I had it approved.
We're not arguing that point.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious about the current, the current use of the, what's in the structure right now.
There's nothing in the structure right now. The structure's been sitting now for a year and a half.
So nobody's using it, there's...
I brought some guys in that I used to play in a rock band back in the fort, back in the 60s. We went in and we practiced for a little while, but that's about it.
But there were people living there.
There was people living there some years back. My, my son...
But how would they, so it is set up to be not a shop, but a dwelling?
It's all been disassembled.
Okay.
Everything's been taken apart. And you know that, because Art Crowley came out, and he came out and went through this with me, all right? Now, you might not have it on paper, okay? But Art Crowley came out, him and I, I like Art, he's a good man, all right? When my son was getting thrown out with my grandkids some years back, and they had no place to go, I did a stupid thing. I built them a two-bedroom apartment so they could have a place to live, I called it a hospice, all right? At the same time, some other people showed up at my door, they were living in their cars. So I helped them. It wasn't the right thing to do, all right, but I did it. When it was said and done, I went to Art Crowley, and him and I had meetings. He said, "You got to take this stuff out, you got to do this." I said, "Fine." I took it all out, everything, all right? Except for the one bathroom downstairs, which is in the basement, which I am approved to have one bathroom.
I just, and I get, fine, it's approved, but I don't, I don't, I'm trying to think of another one that we've...
I didn't build the house.
That's even come before us, that's had a shop on top of a shop.
Why not?
And then usually, we, it wouldn't be approved with a big deck like that, there'd just be a stairs to go up. Usually, if there's a shop like that, if that's even an RC2, it's no storage outside, you've got to have special windows, you've got to have special air conditioning, so there's no noise to the neighbors. There's a lot of conditions that go along with having any kind of shop, especially, I think, did you say it was a carpentry shop, is that what you said?
Yeah, I like to do carpentry work, yeah.
So then there's kind of machinery that's operated with that. So there's, there's other things that go along with allowing shops like that, and I think we've had other ones in the past on Appleton Road.
But I am on VTEC, right?
Yeah, no, I do, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to...
Doesn't VTEC say that I can have a shop? I've been told that I can have a shop.
Yeah, I'm not saying you can't have a shop, I'm just saying that usually there are conditions that go along with it, and there are certain things that would be approved...
But we're not even getting that far yet.
I know, I, I hear you, but I'm just, I just, I'm trying to reconcile what you're saying, what I'm seeing on paper, and what I see in the photo, and what I'm hearing from the neighbors, and it just doesn't seem to gel with me.
I don't understand why.
Because it's out of the, it's very much out of the norm.
It certainly is. No, I think we can all agree that it's very much out of the norm, including the fact that, you know, the town was assessing this and showing this on the assessors' records as Mizun Mast Extension until about the same time as the rezoning to VTEC. And both of those points had not been picked up evidently by Val when she started to fill out that application. And it was still confusion on the point when it was in the building department.
Well, because I think they would, they would think that if someone is saying they're having... their house is on Miz and Mast and extension or otherwise and they take that person and that's where it is, this property, it seems, didn't have access via Miz and Mast and should have been taking its frontage on Appleton Road. And am I correct that there wasn't any access easement from the land bank to be able to access?
No legal access. There's, there's physical access right now, but no legal access.
But they didn't have permission to be doing that?
Right, right.
So, I mean, I think that falls back on the applicant. So I don't think it's the town's fault that they didn't know that there weren't, they don't do title exams on every person that comes in and says where their property is.
Well, again, the, you know, my, my client is not an expert in zoning.
No, but it just seems like all these people that were involved, it, it's a little hard, I mean, I just feel like it's a little hard to swallow, but, yeah, I'm one person, so. I mean, how do you guys feel about the second floor deck?
It's a tough one.
I mean, I can see my way, I can see my way for the house, the, I think, the house is sided 26, so it's like four feet in the setback?
No, it's not.
My second round? Four inches, sorry, pardon me, I'm sorry.
If this were the back, if this were the rear.
The structure is four, is approximately four inches at one point. At the, at the other corner, it conforms. The deck entirely extends, or almost entirely extends into the, into the front yard setback.
I just, I just don't think the HTC would have approved it had the facts been correct. And I'm very familiar with this property. I walk by it almost every day. And, you know, it's not a workshop, it's a house. And I, I, I can't see myself voting for a variance.
No, I can't either.
May I, at this point, request the withdrawal of the application without prejudice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that, but if we didn't turn down, we get to turn down because of the deck or we get to turn it down because of the building? Now, the building, I can't move the building. That has a 10-foot.
Well, let me, let me, let me withdraw that request for the moment. What about the possibility of having relief for the structure, per se?
How long has the structure been there and when was the building permit issued for the structure?
2013.
Okay, so it's...
Then the, the, the building has been there a little bit less than that.
So it's not been six years?
Building?
Building has been there for six years, but not the deck.
So is it protected under state law?
It actually is probably protected under the six-year statute since it was issued pursuant, since it was constructed or placed there pursuant to a building permit.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep. So on the basis of that, relief would not be necessary.
That's correct.
Even if the building permit had incorrect information?
If the building is permitted and used under the description of how the building was to be used and has a certificate of occupancy, it's protected.
No, it, no, no.
No, the certificate of occupancy does not...
It doesn't have to have a certificate of occupancy.
No, it's six years, the statute is six years.
Six years of, of being, you know, in, in that location.
That's correct.
Yep.
But that's not including the deck?
No.
Not including the deck?
Not including the deck.
So, Arthur, did Arthur just ask if we would consider a variance for the main structure?
Yep.
Without the decks?
Yep.
Which now we don't have, you're saying we don't have to do because it's been six years?
I, I think it would be cleaner if you did it, if, if you granted the relief specifically for that. I mean, otherwise, we have to go through the, the point of, of further proof when I think we've demonstrated to you that it's been there for, that the permit was issued six, more than six years ago and it's been there for more than six years.
So the, the relief would be four to six inches?
Yeah.
And there aren't any first-floor doors on that side of the building?
Not going to be anymore.
Okay, because, because if you put a, a stoop in, you'd be a further violation.
We'll just have to sidewall that side up.
Yep.
There's gonna be a shop anywhere.
Place something on the other side.
And then, how, then how do we want to handle the deck?
They're, they're not asking for relief. I assume they take them down?
We would, under those circumstances, we would, we would, excuse me, withdraw our request for relief for the deck and allow and, and acknowledge that in order to comply with the permit, we would have to remove or relocate the deck.
Okay. I can see my way to that.
And just one, one question. If we granted the relief, the permit would be good for...
What is it?
Two years?
The special permit?
Yeah, it'd be a...
It's a variance, isn't it?
Variance.
I think, I think it's a variance. It'd be good for a year.
A year, okay.
We'd have, we'd have to exercise it, do the work within a year, which we would certainly do.
Do you have another thing to say? Just come down to the microphone, okay, because we don't have Terry here today.
I just wanted to clarify that, that the removal of the deck is also going to include the removal of the sliding glass doors, the exterior door and the lighting?
Well, they'll have to comply with the, with the lighting bylaw or else they'll be in violation, as they might. And the door, as he stated...
As far as the lights go, I might put some exterior lights on that are on a monitor, just in case.
Whatever you, whatever it is, that, right, that, but it just needs to comply with the zoning bylaw.
That's right. We, we, we have to comply. We have to comply. That's not a zoning issue.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's, but it's, you'd have to, whatever you do with lighting has to comply.
Of course. It complied when we went in because we had the electrical inspector go through the last time and he approved it all.
And as far as the doors are concerned, once again, as, as Rick indicated earlier, obviously you don't have a door opening up from the second floor into nowhere. And so that'll have to be closed up and, and we may have to deal with the HTC as far as that's concerned, but...
There may be an egress issue depending upon how the building is going to be used from this point forward.
That would, that would have, obviously we've got to deal with compliance with the building code.
So we're saying that there'll be a variance of...
For the...
10-point...
For specifically, it's the, the...
It's a 10-foot setback if you use Appleton.
The structure at its closest point, on, on one side, the structure is 30.8 feet. So it conforms. On the other end, it's, it's...
The main structure without the deck.
On the other end, it's 29.6.
It's four inches.
So six is, well, about five inches, five inches.
Okay. Yeah, I was using the, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do we have any conditions we want to put on this?
Can't think of any.
Just that we'd remove the deck.
Yeah, I mean...
You'll need to do that with a valid building permit, but that is not our purview.
Well, we'll, I think the decision will, will state that the applicant has agreed to move the deck, remove the deck.
And bring the building into compliance with whatever building codes it needs to be in.
It's in code. I've had the bill.
No, I'm saying the, the doors and the sliders and all that and then, and egress. Right, I just want it in the decision.
No, I'm trying to straighten this all out, folks. I'm not trying to punch you. I'm not happy about taking the deck down. Feel like you excuse me.
I'm sure. Okay, so does someone want to make a motion for this?
You have to approve also the withdrawal.
Oh, right, okay. So someone needs to make a motion to, to make a motion to approve the withdrawal?
Yes.
So someone want to make a motion to approve the withdrawal?
Yeah, partial withdrawal.
Okay, so, alright, so partial withdrawal?
Yes, as to the decks.
Okay, so partial withdrawal as to the decks. Karen made the motion, Michael seconded, all those in favor, aye. And does someone want to make a motion for the variance to...
I'll make that motion to grant the, up to six inches of relief for the main structure.
Into the front yard setback.
Mm-hmm. And that the applicant will remove the existing deck? Yeah, any other encroachments?
Correct.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Were you in aye?
I said aye.
What?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so this one is application 24-19, Edward F. Henman III and Lucia T. Henman III, or Heniman, how do you say it, John?
Honiman.
Honiman, sorry. 26 Sesapana Road, John Brusher representing.
Good afternoon, for the applicant's attorney, John Brusher. What we have before us is a special permit request to increase pre-existing non-conforming ground cover. The locus is at 26 Sesapana Road. It contains a single-family dwelling and a garage. And the lot and the structures are non-conforming with, lot is non-conforming with respect to both frontage and lot size and the structures are non-conforming with respect to ground cover. Specifically, the ground cover is currently approximately 5.66%, or about 1726 square feet. In the zoning district, that requires a 3% maximum ground cover or 1,500 square feet, whichever is greater. In terms of the non-conformity as to lot size and frontage, it has only 30,496 square feet in a, in lug three zoning, which requires 120,000 square feet and has 165 feet of frontage on Sesapana. And in lug three, you need 200 feet of frontage. The locus in this, this is part of the Sesapana Taupu subdivision that allowed for sub-minimum lots and non-conformities, I believe it was R2 zoning at the time when the, when the subdivision was created. Specifically, we're requesting special permit relief pursuant to 13933A4 to allow the ground, to allow the expansion of the single-family dwelling to have a ground cover of 2,266 square feet, which comes to a ground cover ratio of 7.4%. In the alternative, we'd ask for a variance to, for the same. We have a site plan showing the proposed addition as well as historic district commission approval for the renovation. Historically, the zoning board of appeals has taken the approach that the, that these lots are treated as having R2 zoning or R2 zoning, which results in allowable 12.5% ground cover. It fits more in line with the lot sizes and the frontage. However, it is currently zoned lug three. And as such, in order to allow for these overages, we need special permit relief. There are a handful of decisions for other properties in the subdivision in which repeatedly say that the board of appeals and the building commissioner take the, take the position that it is R2 zoning. So in light of all that, seeing as the addition will be outside all the setbacks, it will still be under the sort of assumed 12.5% ground cover that board of appeals and building commissioner, then acting building commissioner takes on these. We find that the proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that the board of appeals may be able to grant desirable relief. If you, there was also an existing zoning board of appeals special permit on this property circa 2011, which, again, part of the dicta and it discusses the board of appeals sort of historic practice of giving these up to 12.5% ground cover. If you have any questions, please let me know.
This, this property's been around, zoning board, many times.
Handful of times.
And it was in court for several years, too.
Before my time?
Mm-hmm.
So funny, those decisions. So I didn't, I didn't really have any questions or issues with this one. I looked at the other decisions, they're, you know, Reese, I think my name's on a bunch of them, where we're treating other lots in the area as if they were R2, R2. Did anyone have, did anyone have any issues that they want to?
Any neighbors have any comments?
No, is there anyone in the audience about it? No. Did you, did you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a letter in favor.
It, it, for 10 years ago, 12 years ago, the neighbors were lined up here.
Against it?
Oh, yeah.
Pendulum has swung, you're saying?
Perhaps they needed additions themselves.
Yes. Or just that there's been, what, four other decisions that have said the same thing? So we have one letter in favor, there's no one else to speak about this one. It seems like no one on the board has any questions or issues with it? Okay. Does someone want to make a motion? No? I mean, we can discuss it. I just didn't, I didn't see any points that, other than, you know, it falling within the, what seemed reasonable to me based on the prior decisions and doesn't seem like the, what's being requested is outside of what we've done in the past?
Chair can make a motion.
Oh, I can? Okay, well then the chair will make a motion to approve the relief requested. Do we do, we don't do any restrictions or anything on this area, do we, Eleanor?
Not typically, no.
No, okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, so the next one is 2619, Sheila Giordani and Carmine Giordani for Seven Clifford Street. And this one is represented by Cohen. Just before you start, Stephen, we, we did get an email, right, this, we got the license from Erica Mooney today, Eleanor?
Yeah, yes.
Like at like 11?
I forwarded that to you.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I...
I also have a copy if you want to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I looked, I didn't have time to print it, I looked at it. It was the same one that was in the packet though, just signed, right?
It was, it was just signed, yeah.
Yeah, which is what we asked.
Yeah, and the licenses for landscaping purposes, it doesn't allow for structures.
No, I think it's like for the fence and the things. I'll give it back to you. Okay, sorry.
Okay, so just to remind the board of the history here, my, this client came in with a similar applicant, application seeking a variance to put a structure, a pool and a pergola within the setback on the idea that there's a 20-foot paper road next to them, which they will acquire and have, you know, a significant setback after that happens. The board did not seem inclined to grant that variance and we went back to the drawing board and frankly Eleanor pointed out that this district is within the district where you're allowed to reduce your rear and side lot setback from 10 feet to 5 feet by special permit, essentially just by establishing that it's not, that it's consistent with the purpose and harmony of the bylaw or not inconsistent with the purpose and harmony of the bylaw. And this board has regularly granted that permit in most cases. In this particular case, I think we have an excellent case for it because you've got a 20-foot, essentially no-bill barrier between the lots now and that will become a 15-foot setback after the land transfer is, occurs. So you can by special permit grant this reduction of the 10-foot setback to 5 feet and feel comfortable that that will also result in having the pool further from where it would be later. Does that make sense? And the pool and pergola. There was also a question about the generator and you'll note that the plan now shows that is existing to be removed.
Does anyone have any questions for Stephen?
I have no concerns.
No, I don't either.
Okay.
That's what we asked for, right?
Yep. Karam, do you have any concerns?
No.
Anything from the audience?
Just introduce yourself again for this application. Thank you.
Campbell Sutton, resident of Nantucket. I don't live in this area, though I do know that it is growing considerably. There's a lot of building going on. And if they haven't yet purchased the paper road, that doesn't give you a guarantee that you're going to end up with a 15-foot setback in an area that's supposed to have 20 feet, I believe, between buildings there. And it just seems a five-foot intrusion of a pool down the long side, they seem to have plenty of property on this lot, so I'm not quite sure why the pool, you know, which will produce light and noise, needs to be within the setback. I know at town meeting, there was a, something was passed where you could have like an intrusion into the setback for things like a stair, a stairway, you know, to a porch or something like that, but I didn't think that this really fell under that, the intent of that article. It was just what I was gonna say. Thanks.
So I do appreciate Campbell's point. I do want to note that we're dealing with a 10-foot setback reduced to 5 here. And also that, so the entire point of setbacks is to make sure that the neighbors aren't close, too close to each other, right? So in this case, because there's already a 20-foot barrier between the neighbors, even if we don't get the land, there's still that barrier, it remains there. So in this case, you would never have anything in there if that didn't happen. So you're looking at either nothing will ever be there, or my client will own it. So in either way, you're looking at a greater setback than otherwise would happen when you have two lots abutting each other. So in this case, you're looking at a special permit request for a 5-foot reduction, which this board has regularly granted, and which no neighbors have opposed, and which I think in this case is well justified by the fact that there's so much space between the butter. Thank you. And that it doesn't rely on the transfer of the yard sale land, which the variance was banking on.
Motion to grant the relief as requested.
And do I want a second?
And are you saying no more building in the 10-foot setback is the condition? As requested here.
With no further intrusion.
No further.
Further intrusion. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please go on.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that 5-0?
Unanimous.
Thank you, and especially thank you to Eleanor, you were very helpful, as always.
That's a good solution. So the next application is 27-19, Joe, sorry, Joseph A. Demby, 7 Hull Lane, Arthur Reed representing.
Yes, for the applicant attorney, Arthur Reed. I represented my client, Joseph Demby, who was here with me several years back, when he and his first wife were divorcing. They had a lot with two houses on it, and we obtained a variance in order to enable them to split it. The property is in our 10 zoning. The total area of the lot was in excess of 18,000 square feet, so we were granted a variance to allow it to be split with the house that was retained by the wife containing 10,000 square feet, and Mr. Demby's lot containing 8,000 square feet. Also, a variance for the front yard setback, which became, the rear yard setback, as it had been measured from Hooper Farm Road, became front yard setback from Hull Lane to the rear. We're, in that application, there were two conditions that were applied. One was that there would be no secondary dwelling, and the other was that there would be no further ground cover without further relief from the board. If we were dealing with this whole issue today, we would probably be dealing with it in the context, it's in the light of the zoning changes that have taken place since then, as the creation of a secondary residential lot. And we now have provision in the bylaw for tertiary dwellings, and in general, the ability to construct structures in this type of neighborhood has been enhanced. What we're asking for would be that the, that those conditions be removed. There's plenty of room on this site to construct a small secondary dwelling. The lot area is 8,200 square feet. The existing ground cover is 1,307 square feet. There is a shed, which would probably go away, which is an exempt shed, 107 square feet. That would probably be the location that a second dwelling could be placed in. So that would either be moved and remain as a exempt zoning shed, or completely removed. There's also a vinyl shed shown on the plan, which is to be removed. That's within the setbacks. That was only a temporary structure, anyway. And also, there is at the present time, a stoop that is 8.3 feet from the side lot line, with 10 feet being required. That'll be relocated, and we're in agreement with all of that. But in any event, we would ask that those conditions be removed so that Mr. Demby would be able to have a secondary dwelling. He has two children in their twenties, one of whom is in college at the present time, and we want to maintain as much flexibility as possible in connection with the use of the lot. We wouldn't go in excess, obviously, of the 25% ground cover that's permitted, and that would give approximately 900 square feet of additional ground cover, that would be, 800 square feet of additional ground cover that would potentially be available for a secondary dwelling. Mr. Demby is here with me, and he's lived on the island since, and lived and worked on the island since 1983, and I think is a solid member of the community, and we'd like to enable him to have the relief to build what would basically be entirely in conformity with zoning, except for that condition, and the circumstances of the creation of the lot. Joseph, do you want to say anything?
Okay.
If you have any question, I'll be very.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Does anybody have any comment or question on this one?
Is there any opinions from the butters regarding that?
I didn't see any.
I did see some, I thought I saw several letters.
No letters.
There none, in favor?
Oh, in favor. I think there were letters in favor on the previous, maybe there's some letters this time in favor, I don't know. I know there were letters in favor.
Unless I had the letters out of order for another, from another.
Maybe from the last application, from the last application when they separated the lot?
Okay.
Okay, well, that's good.
Okay.
And Arthur, were you saying in your presentation that this was, without the condition on the variance, this would be allowed as a matter of right?
If this were a pre-existing lot of record, 8,000 square feet, 8,200 square feet, we'd have the same available ground cover, 25%, or about 2,100 square feet. And we would be able to, and we'd be, obviously, for the secondary dwelling, we've got to comply with parking requirements, which we can do, and we would have to get the planning board's secondary dwelling approval, which
80-20 rule.
Which, there shouldn't be any, right, the separation of structures of 10 feet will have to be maintained. We know that, and the ground cover differential, again, there would be no difficulty in maintaining that. But we have to comply with all those things. We're not asking for relief from anything other than simply the removal of those conditions.
Is there any, there's no one else in the audience that wants to speak about this? No?
I don't know, Sarah's really lying low over there.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as requested. You're gonna be, you said you're gonna be, the landing is being moved?
The landing will be moved out of the setback, and that other shed will be eliminated.
Okay.
And then, and no further expansion within the setback allowed?
No further expansion within any setback allowed.
Correct, that's my motion.
And the remainder of the variance shall remain in full force and effect?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Michael seconded, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jim, do you want to hand this, can you just hand that back to Eleanor, so I don't lose her stuff? So next up is 2819 10R Mount Vernon Street LLC. Property is 10R Mount Vernon Street, and Sarah Alja representing.
Sarah Alja for the applicant. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's an 81L lot. Actually, was done prior to the change in the bylaw that makes 81L lots pre-existing non-conforming, but that is, in fact, what it is. The property was conforming with ground cover until April 2019, when the ground cover ratio and ROH was changed from 40 to 50%, at which point the property became non-conforming, having ground cover of 43.6%. It's 1,023 square feet is the existing building. Unfortunately, the owner of 10R Mount Vernon Street is a summer resident. She wasn't aware of the zoning change. She had been for the last year or so, working on a small addition to her house. It's a 72-square-foot addition. And I'll show you, I realized that you didn't have this plan, so I got it in full size.
So it's not a proposed floor plan. It's actually been under construction, yes?
No.
No?
She hasn't approved it or anything.
Okay.
It is proposed, it's totally proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, she's proposing to close in an area of 72 square feet on an existing porch area, sort of filling it in. So she was quite disappointed to learn that that 72 square feet was no longer allowable, would have taken her from 43.6% to 46.7% or total ground cover of 1,095. We think that we meet the requirements of 13933A2. I know that's relief that you're not always all that enthusiastic to grant, but I'm hoping, under the circumstances, you'll agree. We don't think it will be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming ground cover. It's consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. It was all 50% just until recently. And the extension is going to be otherwise conforming to the dimensional requirements of the bylaw.
Sarah, what was the rationale behind changing the ground cover from 50% to 40%? I have no idea.
It wasn't discussed at town meeting. The article wasn't called. But my understanding from conversations with Andrew was that he did a, he did sort of a survey and found that most, most lots were under 40, and except in Sconset, so that, so the SOH remains at 50, and the ROH went from 50 to 40. I have a feeling that this is probably not the first, the last one of these you're gonna see.
I agree. I just don't understand why we made the change.
The discussion at the planning board that I remember was about, instead of having expansion on the ground, it would be more of expansion up.
So many lots are non-conforming, and now we're creating more non-conformities.
So.
Well, I can't, I can't disagree with you on that. I also can't do anything about it. Yeah, so she got very much caught unawares. And unfortunately, even if she'd known about it, there was, there's really nothing you can do to protect yourself on this kind of a change. It just, it happens.
Yeah. There were no letters objecting to it.
It's de minimis.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't have an issue with this. I think that it sort of squarely falls within 13933A2. Does anyone else have any comments? Question?
I'm fine with it, as long as we can clearly define why we're hanging our hat on that. So later on, when you get these, like you said, it's probably gonna be a few.
Doubt.
Yeah. Which is what? What, what does our? We're going on 13933A, and we're basing it on minimal impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's minimal impact on the neighborhood, I think, because there's already a porch there that's being closed in. It's not changing the outline of the structure, doesn't look like.
Or footprint.
Or the footprint, right, better word.
No objections?
Yeah, there's no objections from neighbors, and it really, it's not, it's not, she's, if it was within the old zoning, it would still be, she'd still be under.
Allowable.
Yeah, it'd be allowable. It's, and I think it's de minimis.
So I'll make the motion to approve the application as requested.
And do we put any construction deadlines or moratorium on this one? Because it is, okay, so.
Whatever the dates are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant to, I meant, I meant to mention that. We expected that.
Should only take about two weeks to construct.
I know, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a prolonged project. Yeah, well, it has been approved by the HTC.
Sounds good.
Okay. Did anyone second Karam's motion?
I'll second it.
I think Jim was about to.
Oh, you did, okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So for other business, it's, we just continue it? Really?
Well, if you'd like, I can bring you up to speed on.
Well, I mean, the beach club thing, right, we don't need to talk about. They, they, no one's here for that.
No one's here for that, and that, the reason for that is that they're in continued
Negotiations.
Negotiations, and is progressing in a, in a amicable way so far, and as to the policies and protocols, as with last month, like, I was thinking if we had six members.
Oh, yeah, probably more people. Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense. That makes sense.
And the potential warrant articles was just to put it on your radar, so just be aware, and I will try and remember to send you. So just be aware, and I will try and remember to send you when the planning board has their meetings about the town meeting. If you want to attend, you can. It's a very preliminary bunch of documents in the packet, but it's really just to put it on the radar. No -- free information.
I will say, I went to a bunch of the planning board meetings last year, and it was really informative for, like, the discussion for why things are changed. And if you can go with it's zoning-related or something that you're interested in personally, like, it's definitely worth it.